Thank you. A call to order the Sling County Commission Public Forum meeting, October 23rd, 2018. Would you all please stand for the flag salute and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Clerk, call the order. I mean, call the...
The roll.
Roll. Thank you.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Commissioner Weis?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Thank you. Now, anyone that would wish to speak here at the public forum, citizens may speak on county government and not on the agenda, usually limited to three minutes.
Norman Anil Salina. I was here about three, four meetings ago when I brought up the issue. The commissioners don't attend meetings that you're required to attend. There was a water meeting right here in Salina about three weeks ago, right in your back door. You didn't attend. Well, there was another meeting here again last Friday. Nobody from the county was there. Why? It's right here. You didn't have to travel. Didn't have to overnight or nothing. So, we would like you to attend so you can understand the water issues that are going on in the county and the state. So, they would like to see you guys there. I'm there. And my next comment is, I just discovered something. You commissioners, do any of you know what the Hatch Act is? Look it up. I will imagine that you guys will be withdrawing your candidacy.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
Bernie Botson, Sling County Emergency Management. I'd just like to bring up today, October 23rd, it's the anniversary for the Marine barracks in Beirut bombing. And it was a single loss of life, largest loss of life for the Marine Corps at that time since the Battle of Iwo Jima in World War II. And there was a total of 241 service members lost. 220 Marines, 18 Navy personnel, and three Army soldiers lost their lives at the Beirut bombing on October 23rd. And I'd just like to commemorate that and bring it up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Bernie. That is, that's interesting. Okay, regular business. Approve agenda for a public forum is presented. Item one?
Approve agenda for public forum is presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item two?
Presentation of Kansas Emergency Management Association 2018 Outstanding Service Award. Lori Harrison, Kansas Emergency Management Association President.
Good morning, Lori.
Good morning. The Outstanding Service Award recognizes individuals or groups outside of our association who have put forth significant effort, either during a specified period of service or for a specific action or accomplishment which furthers the aim of our association and is beyond mere performance of regular duties. For the past four years, Hannah has served as KEMA's representative to the Kansas Association of Counties Governing Board. She accepted the appointment to represent our association and our profession. Through her tireless efforts, county commissioners and other local officials throughout the state of Kansas have a better understanding of emergency management's role in normal operations and in emergency response. The Executive Director of the KAC, Randall Allen, agrees that Hannah has been an exceptional liaison between the two organizations. Hannah provided both topics and presenters to deliver information on emergency management at the annual KAC conference. She continually looks for ways to inform and influence persons and groups about the importance of emergency management in our society. She gets the importance of connecting with other groups and finding areas of mutual interest and concern. So, it's my pleasure, Hannah, to present the KEMA 2018 Outstanding Service Award to Hannah Stanball. Congratulations. Thank you.
A fun opportunity. And I wasn't told about the purple, so...
Okay.
I'm good.
We'll get one more.
Just in case you shave.
No, just in case you're looking away like you're...
Oh, like I just did. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah, for such a great job. And thank you, Lori, for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet you.
Can I get a picture with her and the commissioners?
Me too.
Even though I don't have purple?
My KEMA reps and my KEMA folks are kind of a little bit of a big deal.
I didn't get them. They're kind of a big deal.
It's a big deal.
Slide in. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Not like being bossy. One, two, three. One, two, three. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three?
Idle fund report. Jim DeBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. DeBois.
Good morning, Commissioners. I think we lost most of our audience.
I thought they were all here for you.
Hardly. Well, I do kind of bring you good news once more again. Before we do that, I want to go over kind of a quick overview of accounts. I gave you all a, an annual report. I did change page two because I messed up on a date in there, so I did correct the date on it. If you turn to page two and you look at the summary of statement of investments that we have, you'll see that we don't have any money right now in the T-bills. As a matter of fact, we haven't had probably money in the T-bills for the last four years because of interest rates. And a lot of what had happened with the Treasury bills is they went online. And I don't feel that investing the county's money online is a wonderful process. I'd rather have access and quick access to our funds through our local banks here in town. We have, as of October 9th, we had $24 million in our bank accounts. We do have seven bank accounts where we have the money invested. And you'll see kind of a breakdown of where we have it. The only one outside of Salina is Citizen State Bank. We do have a little bit of funds in Gibson, Kansas there. Our certificate of deposits, we have $8,650,000 in five different accounts. Right now, when we get ready to make some changes or we have a CD that comes due, we do have a small committee, including myself, one of my staff, and Rita Deister, the county administrator, take a look at where we are at funds and who has the best interest rates. And I try and ladder those things out. So, we have some in 12 months. We have some 24 months. The hardest part is, we can only go out two years in there. And I, we want to keep the county as fluid as possible. So, if something were to happen, we'll be able to draw funds out and go from there. Hopefully, we won't have anything happen. Third page in there is basically how much money we have in petty cash, cash on hand. Our total Sling County County funds right now is about $32,670,000. I also put in there the 2017 abstract that's done by the clerk's office. And it's kind of a breakdown of where we're at on the abstract by agency and type. But if you look at that very next page where it says "Collection of Taxes and Information as of October 9th, 2017," we're pretty close to where we were last year. The only difference is, our percentage of delinquency to date is 1.78. Last year, we were at a 2.15. So, it's a .37 difference in there. But we do have a little bit of time that we're still looking at. Of course, we're still waiting. When the clerk gets done and says to levy, hopefully, we'll get everything out. I think we're still waiting on one more county to get some figures into us before that happens. I get a little nervous. I don't mind saying that. We want to try and get the tax statement out as close to Thanksgiving as possible. Now, I'll give everybody an ample opportunity, time to see where they're at and start making, yeah, start making adjustments in their personal accounts and kind of go from there. The idle interest report, which would be the next page in there, this is really kind of a good thing. We're looking at third quarter interest in there. As of 2018, we have made $168,226.32 compared to $83,000 last year. So, we're ahead of the ballgame by $85,134.51 idle interest as of September, really this year. It's going to be $419,290.64. So, I feel pretty good about where we're at. We continue to go forth. The Fed's talking about raising the rate one more time. I refer sometimes to Commissioner Shadwick because he's the kind of genius behind some of that stuff. But if the Fed raises the rate and we're, we make quite a bit of money towards the end of the year, around December 20th, in our collection of tax statements and kind of go from there. So, that's it. Come bearing good news for you. Hopefully, hopefully, continue to do that for quite a while. Go from there. So, with that, Commissioners, have any questions?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
You sure you can't put that tax statement out till after the first of January?
[laughing]
I mean, if you want to bear good news, let's just go ahead and do that, okay?
You know, I always tell people that I follow the, what is it, 125-41 rule, which is the majority of the state representatives, senators, and one governor. Once they sign off on that, I'll follow the statutory regs. So...
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, everybody.
You bet. Item four?
RFA 193-18, fiscal year 18, KDOC year-end outcome report. Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Annie.
Good morning. See, I ran all the way up here.
Mm-hmm.
This is just end of last year's information. I can't remember if last time I was here, I did the exact same thing. But the first document has been in front of our advisory board last week and approved. It is the annual year-end outcome report for our adult population. Back in the days, we would track for DOC 10, 11 things. Then you realize they only care about a couple of things, successes and revocations. So, you can make it a lot easier for yourself if you just track those kind of things. We do track for DOC our employment rate and the homeless work, homeless population work we're doing. But outside of DOC's reports, we track multitudes and multitudes of data. But I just report these specific things to DOC. And I do a quarterly report to them that does not have to take board or commissioner's signature, and then the year-end report does require it. We talked to the board last, a little bit about last time. We wanted to hit a 71% successful completion rate, 71% of the clients being successful for that year. We hit a 65.9. It's a little higher than last year, but we haven't been out of that 60, middle 60s range for a while. It's a difficult challenge to hit that up into the 70s for our agency. Our population is ever-growing. We're up to a little over 500 adult offenders and 150 juvenile offenders right now. So, we keep working on it. We'll keep striving to hit that, but we're just not there. But our employment rate is very good. And I want to, Project for Success is graduating their, I think, 10th class this Thursday. And if you don't know what Project Success is, it's too much to tell you. But it is a group of people that put together an opportunity for anybody to come to it. DCF sends people, we send people. And for a very little bit amount from my budget, we send four each time. And I think it's about $250, $300 for them to participate. But it's a 10-week course. And they get, they learn a lot of skills and learn how to maintain employment. And then they get the opportunity to go out and intern at large agencies or businesses or corporations in our company, in our community. And many times, they're hired. All of our clients that have completed it, and we've put someone in every class, have, all but one stayed through the whole thing. And all but two maintained their employment to date. So, it's an amazing project. And because of that, our employment rate is low that aren't employed. So, I want to give a shout out to them. But, so I'm just seeking approval to send this on to DOC. It did go in front of the board, did get approved there. And I just need a signature from the chairman, chairperson.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we submit the KDOC FY18 year-end outcome report.
Do I hear them? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five. Is there any public comment on this? I'm sorry. I apologize if there, if I've missed that, if there's any public comment on that. Okay. Item five?
RFA 194-18, fiscal year 19, KDOC Juvenile Services Carryover Reimbursement Budget. Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Thank you. This is another year-end wrapping-up documentation. This reimbursement budget, and you'll see the same thing on the adult carryover, is just years and years of collecting fees from clients that we have forwarded to them previously. You know what we do. We pay medication, rent, clothing, gosh, I don't even, medical care. We just, thousands and thousands of dollars go to services, substance abuse, mental health, you name it. And some of them do repay that before they get off probation. And so, it builds up in that. And in our juvenile services, we've accumulated over many years, a total of $240,778.09. Those offset cuts. So, every time DOC makes a cut or we don't get full funding and other grants that we apply for, we dip into these funds to provide services to clients. Also, DOC does not allow out-of-state training. All our drug court training is out-of-state, so it comes out of these reimbursements. DOC doesn't allow for payout of an employee that may retire or quit or whatever. So, those funds have to come out of here. Increases in insurance and salaries and all that are not covered by DOC. So, those come out of these funds. So, we watch them very, very carefully. In our move over to the new facility and those costs that we had incurred, they came out of here, these two adult and juvenile carryovers. So, I can't complain. We've saved it. And we have it where it needs to be. And we are very, very frugal with it. And, but it also is a lifesaver because usually if, like last year when the federal grant wasn't released, the feds didn't release the dollars for the grant last year, we took it out of these funds. And so, it's good to have these funds. I'm lucky. There are a lot of agencies that don't have them. They have to use them immediately when they get them. And we are able to storm away. So, I just, this has been in front of the board yesterday. This needs to be approved by the commissioners and signed by the chairperson and sent off to DOC in the amount of $204,778.09.
Okay. Thank you, Annie. Do I hear a motion to approve RFA 195-18 FY19?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the KDOC FY19 Juvenile Services Carryover Reimbursement Budget in the amount of $240,778.09.
Okay. Excuse me. Except, this here number here is different than that amount. Do we have, oh, excuse me. Down to the next one. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six?
RFA 195-18, fiscal year 19, KDOC Adult Services Carryover Reimbursement Budget. Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Thank you. Same thing. This is the adult budget. You will see it is significantly higher, $484,421.06. That is because all the contract work we do for St. Francis, collecting the UAs on their adult clients, goes into this budget because it's adult services. So, those are funneled into this budget. So, it does increase it quite a bit difference. But also, when you have 500 adult offenders and 150 juvenile offenders, you're going to see a difference in the services sent out and returned. So, that makes, that makes it clear why it is that way. Again, grateful to have them. Grateful that we've watched these. We'll continue to watch these. We're very blessed to have this. We've had to dip into this multiple times. And as it looks, we'll continue to dip into it. But it's a saving grace for us in times that staff issues and other things come up. So, I'm seeking approval for the commission to sign this and go off to DOC. We did get board approval last week.
One question I have is, do you have that in a separate account? Or is it all still in the general fund and just kind of...
It's in a, it's in a separate account. I mean, Rita can probably tell you better than I, or should probably scream at me. But unfortunately, Community Corrections has many accounts over there. And so, yeah, it is separately. We cannot co-mingle it with the grant dollars. So, they are separate.
Okay. Thank you.
Annie, do you know what the carryover was last year?
It was more than this. It was almost $500,000. It was a little over $500,000. But we dipped into it quite a bit with our move and some of the projects.
And does it, does it hinder you in going after grants, having this cash on hand?
You would be surprised it does not. What's happened is, is, well, okay, I can tell a couple of things. It does not hinder me in general when we're applying for federal and foundation grants and local grants. That doesn't hinder it at all. DOC made cuts, I think, two years ago. And our board really kind of pushed it with them a little bit. And they referenced this amount of money. But we were able to come back and say, you have no idea what we're going to do with this money. They didn't know we were moving and all of that. So, we came back. We didn't get a cut necessarily, but the overall, the whole state took a cut. And they said, well, we kind of look at that and see that you guys have a buffer. And so, then we worked it out. I actually met with the secretary and told him that you really can't reflect these funds as a buffer for us because there's so much that you can't, isn't allowed in your, the DOC grants that is mandated by county rules and policies and things like that. So, they understood. I don't, this year, they didn't even reflect on that. In the previous, they haven't reflected on it. But one time, they did. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the KDOC FY19 Adult Services Carryover Reimbursement Budget in the amount of $484,421.06.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven?
County Appraiser Update. Staff comments by Sean Robertson, County Appraiser.
Good morning, Sean.
Good morning, Commissioners. Want to start with the fact that we...
It was on, it was on a little bit. Give me a minute. I don't know where...
That's fine.
I don't know why it shut down, but timed out or something, I suppose.
Try clicking on it.
No.
We'll do standby.
Okay.
Standby for technical difficulties.
First time that's ever happened.
Okay. That's right. Anyway, just wanted to start with the fact that for 2018 values, the... I don't know why it shut down, but timed out or something, I suppose. All right.
No.
We'll do a standby.
Okay.
Standby for technical difficulties.
First time that's ever happened.
Yes, that's, okay. That's right. Anyway, just wanted to start with the fact that for 2018 values, the Department of Revenue determined, and I believe that you received a letter from the Property Valuation Division Director of the Department of Revenue, saying that we were in substantial compliance as required by state statutes and directives. Those are basically laws mandating what level of appraisal that we have to meet, and we did so for this past year. Substantial compliance means we completed all the required tasks that we were supposed to do in a timely manner, had documentation of our values, and our values were in close proximity to the sale prices. Property Valuation Division of the Department of Revenue has an entire team that that's all they do is compliance, and we speak to them at least a few times a week. And so they are charged with keeping us on the right path, so. So far in 2018, we've talked about sales ratios all the time. That's the biggest thing that, that we look at to see how well we're doing. And it's our values as of January 1st in 2018 versus sales that happened after that. And right now, we're at a 96.1 ratio, which means in general, our values were just about 96% of what sale prices were. And to be in compliance, you have to be between 90 and 110, so we're right in the middle. I wanted to talk a little bit about the real estate market in Sling County, comparing apples to apples, January through September of '17 versus January through September of '18, just to show you kind of where we are with the real estate market and where we're going. Some things that we can take a look at are the average sale price of single-family homes, the average sale price per square foot of single-family homes, and then the number of building permit applications. You'll notice on here, there's nothing about commercial properties. It becomes very difficult to compare commercial properties to other commercial properties. They have different uses, different types of buildings, whereas with single-family homes, although there certainly are differences between each, they're all used for the same thing. So that's easier to compare. In the first nine months of 2017, the average single-family home price in the county was $158,000. And in 2018, for that same time period, $157,000. Essentially, no difference at all, which shows a very stable market. Now, I will say that the $158,000 average single-family home price in '17 was quite a bit of an increase from '16. So it went up quite a bit in '17 and then has now stabilized. Then you look at average sale price per square foot, which takes out any of the, the problems with looking at different sizes of homes. Again, extremely stable. In 2017, a little over $111 a square foot, and in 2018, almost $113 a square foot, an increase of just over 1%. So again, we're a very stable real estate market so far in '18. The number of total building permits, and this is residential and commercial combined, this is not a mistake or a misprint, have had exactly the same number of building permit applications in January through September. So again, shows that there's still growth, but it's stable compared to the last couple of years.
Sean, I know that you've been here for quite a few years. Has this ever happened before?
I've never seen it.
Exactly the same number?
Exactly, and never really seen it all that close. There's generally a time period where you'll have a big boom of building, and then everybody's done what they're going to do for a little while, and then it'll drop for a couple of years and be back up. But, yeah, this is very unusual.
And this is new construction?
Yes.
Okay. And how?
Well, this, this is new construction and remodeling of what's there, so.
Okay. And how much of that is commercial and how much of that is residential? Do you know?
No, I don't.
That's all right.
I don't have it right.
I just wonder.
I don't have it in front of me. Within the appraisers' office right now, I don't know if any of you have walked by and seen some things that we're doing. We actually just started this last week. We're moving and redoing our front counter. It'll be more accessible, more visible to the public, and it, and we will have our front counter people be able to see people at, right as they come in, see people in the hall before they get around the corner. We're also setting up a new computer station for the public to access appraisal information. We have had one before, but it just impeded any, any traffic flow of people wanting to get back to the appraisers or to mapping, so that'll be moved. We're also moving the front entrance. If you've ever noticed, we have two doors that are almost side-by-side. We'll be using a different one for the entrance now, again, to help traffic flow. Part of what we're doing also is updating some furniture in our countertop. And I just wanted to let you know, we've done that, just piece by piece. It'll be ongoing. We're doing that within the framework of our existing budget, so there isn't anything extra there. And we have, we've gotten everything so far from a local manufacturing company, Triad Manufacturing, Barb Young. So that'll be an ongoing thing. Part of what we have done is just some updating since we've had nothing new in our office for over 20 years, and partially in response to our new neighbors across the hall. We are moving the front counter back to have more of buffer in there. We anticipate some noise problems, you know. And to be quite honest, the most emotional and at times confrontational office in the county is ours. And the, in general, the most emotional courtroom that there is, is juvenile court, and we're just trying to not really get that powder keg of emotion all mixed up between the two and avoid any problems. So that's part of, of why we're doing that also. Another thing that we're doing is, our staff has written, and we will be distributing pamphlets with information about non-highway vehicles, mobile homes, large trucks, trailers, watercrafts, ATVs, mopeds, campers, all those things that we don't normally think of the appraisers' offices taking care of or valuing, but we do. And that will give the public an easier way and see it in a written form to be able to know how all that works. So we've, we already have pamphlets available that address the appeals process and the Board of Tax Appeals and Agland valuation, too, but we've now added to our library. So, any questions?
Sounds good. Any public comment?
Hey, Sean, are more people registering their boats back in Kansas now since they lowered registration fees years ago?
Yes. There used, there used to be a problem with people either registering their votes, their boats, or saying that those boats were located on January 1st in Missouri or Oklahoma, and that problem has essentially gone away since, since they've lowered the assessment rate on boats.
Yeah, I never found out about that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight?
Livestock and Expo Update. Rick Lamer, Livestock and Expo Director.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning. This will be my third quarter update. Seems like summer really flew by. I'll start with the Noxious Weed Department. Balance in the weed capital outlay fund is $45,693.17. Balance for chemical sales in 2018 are $77,780.11. The weed department purchased two iPads that are loaded with Cartograph and GIS programs. Roden Bridge currently uses these in their department. It's just a good way to document what, you know, what's being sprayed in the county and to be able to store pictures and maps of different properties. The county farm, we are now accepting Oliver Hag Memorial Scholarship applications. These are renewable $1,000 scholarships for spring graduating Sling County seniors that will be entering college or trade school and majoring in an ag-related field. You can print these applications off of Sling County's website, or pick one up at our office at 900 Greeley, and the deadline to turn these in is March 8th. Balance in the farm account is $163,921.25. Second half lease payments are due November 1st, so this will add another $36,000 to that farm account. And the three-year leases on the farm and pasture ground expire March of 2020. Expo Center, as you can see, we had 308 event days, January 1st through today. Some of the events we've had in the last three months, Junior Dairy Show, this is their 56th year showing at the Expo Center. This show is put on by Slaena Area Chamber of Commerce, their ag division committee puts this show on. It's actually a big show this year. They had about 153 head of cattle, so it was up this year. Some reason this thing won't click. There we go. They put a lot of work into these cattle, getting them ready to show. It kind of amazed me, these little kids set their tents up in this barn, stay all week with their cattle in there. It was hot in there. Ag Awareness Day, this is an event I really like. This is put on by Sling County Farm Bureau. These are all Sling County 4th graders that come over there to learn about ag and farm life. And the Big Idaho Potato Truck showed up for about an hour at this event, and it was really, this thing kind of surprised me, because our phone was ringing off the hook, people wanting to know where this big potato was at. I'm like... Anyway, there was a lot of people showed up and looked at that. This is a Southwest Dairy Farmer's Portable Milking Parlor. This gal goes around teaching kids where their milk comes from and how they get it. You'd be surprised, a lot of these kids, I like watching them because they've never looked at like cattle or pigs, and they're just amazed by it when they come over there. That time of year, rummage sales. This is Slaena Regional Health Center's rummage sale. We have two of these a year. I walked around looking for treasures, but I didn't find any. Kins and Airs Wedding Receptions, we've probably done six or seven of those the last three Slaena Gun Show, we have two of these a year. This was their fall show. It always draws a big crowd. And the Flu Clinic, to me, fastest place in Slaena to get a flu shot, right there. It doesn't take any time at all to drive through or, or walk in and get it. County employees, the first guinea pig. Slaena Journal Garage Sales, we have two of these a year. This is where the public can bring their treasures in and try to sell them. It always draws a, a big crowd. And this is probably the oldest event the Expo Center has, the 69th Annual Charity Horse Show. This benefits Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Slaena. Wasn't a real good week for them, so their numbers were down a little bit. They only had 130 head, but it was, it was just rainy and cold all week. I like this, these pictures were probably taken on the best day of the show. And then our schedule for next month, typically November and December, we slow down a little bit, but you have the general election coming up on the 6th. If you're in that district, you'll be voting in the 4H Building. And then I have the largest toy show in Kansas coming up on the 17th, so. And then I would like to address questions I've been getting about our current lease. I've had a lot of people come in thinking that it expires in 2019. It actually doesn't. We're good to, through August 2020 is when it actually expires with an option for three more one-year extensions. And, I mean, right now, negotiations are ongoing with the city on a long-term lease, so we'll just see what happens. But give me a call, we're still booking events over there. Any questions?
Any questions? Any public comment? Thank you, Rick. Other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.